Let me call the order. The clock shows 7:32. Welcome to the September 26, 2013 council meeting. We're going to start off this evening with a roll call. Please, Mr. Sarcissi.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Mulner?
Here.
All right. This evening, our president, Ken Martin, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Rita Darrow will do the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, we want to thank you for another day, another chance to do your will. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and unite in purpose. We ask that you guide us this evening for your wisdom to know what is best for us. May we honor you. Amen.
Next on the agenda, we have minutes from the August 22 and September 12 meetings. Do I have any changes or do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented by the clerk for both of those meetings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I abstain from the August 22, ma'am.
Oh, thanks to whoever gave me my keys.
All right. Do we need to do a roll call on that?
No, you can just say all in favor. And Mr. Martin, do you want to abstain from the 9:12?
Yes, I was not here.
So, we have them passed and two abstentions. All right. The next part of our meeting is public comments. You're welcome to come up before council and the mayor at any time, but you need to sign in before you come up. We ask you, please, limit your discussion to five minutes. And this evening, we have Sandro Santoli. Come on up. You can come right to that microphone. Please state your address.
My address?
Yes.
I live at 1949 Columbus Road, Cleveland. I'm an attorney. I'm representing Mr. Havelcheck.
All right.
Basically, I'm not sure how familiar the council is with this issue, but this is regarding 9129 Valley View Road. An August 15 letter was sent to Mr. Havelcheck to demolish a structure that's standing on his property that's actually been standing on his property for eight years now without any problems. In 2004, he received a express consent or permission from the council to, I'm sorry, from the Board of Zoning Appeals to keep the structure standing. And it's not until recently that he was told to tear it down, basically. We made a legal argument to the city, my firm did, and on September 18. The city responded on September 24, but they didn't really address the legal argument that we made. So, there are still ongoing discussions. Now, Mr. Havelcheck was given 45 days from August 15 to demolish the building, which puts us, I believe, on Monday is the 45-day ending period where, I don't know if the city was planning on demolishing the structure, but basically, I'm here to ask that the city do everything in its power not to demolish the building while we're still having ongoing discussions, legal discussions, about the, basically, the legality of what the city is doing. So, I'm asking the city, basically, please do not take any action, or if there is action you can take, to, basically, take any action to postpone any kind of demolishing. I don't, like I said, I don't know if there are plans to demolish it at this point, but it's a significant structure. It would be a very permanent action for the city to take, obviously, if they demolish a structure. That it'll cost Mr. Havelcheck $70,000, considering what's inside of it, to replace it. And we would rather have a court decide whether or not, you know, the city has legal authority to knock it down before there is any action taken by the city. Thank you.
How old is this structure?
The structure, I believe, was built in 91.
So, it's 11 years newer than my house.
It's 11 years newer?
Newer than my house.
Okay.
My house is older than this. Is there anything wrong with it?
No.
Is the roof falling in?
No.
Are the sides coming apart?
No, it's structurally sound.
Is it sinking in the ground?
No.
So, somebody wants to tear down a perfectly good?
Exactly.
Sound structure?
Yes. And the reason is, the reason we were given by the city is that it is a freestanding structure that's not allowed to stand. But the ordinance, the city ordinance states that a new construction can't be created, and we're not asking for new construction. We've had express consent to keep the building up there for eight years now, so I'm not sure exactly what's changed that.
But what happened between last time and now?
That is a good question.
How much time has passed?
Eight years have passed.
So, what were all the officials doing for these eight years?
I'm unaware of that.
Okay.
Ma'am, that's a good question.
And that's why you're in court to find that out, right?
We will be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much we can talk about this up here, but...
Well, I was letting, he can make all the statements he wants. It's totally inappropriate for a lawyer to approach the clients of another lawyer and try to talk to them or convince them to do something. He did that with Mr. Miller, got him to sign an affidavit, which was totally incorrect and out of school to do something like that. It's very inappropriate for a lawyer to come up here and try and convince my clients to do something other than what the administration has determined to do and what we think is legally right. In fact, this property had a condemned building on it in November 2004, according to all of the codified ordinances. On November 30, they appealed to council per Section 1385.09. The actual appeal did not challenge the condemnation order, but only asked for additional time. On December 20, City Council held a hearing on that appeal. A day later, in writing, council agreed to modify the condemnation, give them additional time until January 31, 2005. They failed to follow everything that was supposed to be done. By February 1, 2005, the city was ready to proceed with demolition and restoration of the property, no later than May 1, 2005. The modified order was sent to the council president, by the council president, to the Havelchecks. The Havelchecks did not appeal that order. The records for the meeting that Mr. Miller seemed to remember in December 2004 do not have any such indication in the minutes themselves of that. He approved the minutes later without any mention in those particular meeting of any activity, such as he put in his affidavit. In March of 2013, upon the complaint of a neighboring property owner about the barn, no one knew that the barn was not on the, a different property. They didn't know that. There was no complaints. It's not our job to go out and survey individual properties and do building explanations on them. There was a condemned building. Eventually, it was taken down. This barn was far removed from it. You're not allowed to have an accessory storage building on a lot without a main building. There has to be a main building before you can have an accessory storage building. The law is pretty clear. This council adopted that law. It's been enforced and followed by every other resident in this community. So, they appealed to the BZA when, on the complaint, the building department investigated. They gave a notice to the property owner. This is in violation. You can't stay there unless you can get a variance to have a storage building on a property without a main building. And as a result, the BZA heard all their evidence. They presented a record. They were denied the variance, and then they had legal recourse. They could have appealed that ruling, and they didn't. So, now they're here trying to go in the back door to get council to try and do something, which I don't know what council could do at this point, except amend your ordinances to allow people to have storage buildings on vacant lots without a main building on there. You might want to talk to your planners as to why those laws are there, but most every community has that same kind of law, so that people don't go renting individual pieces of property and putting up storage buildings for their cars or their boats or whatever it is they might want to do. So, yes, we are having legal recourse discussions. I wrote them a letter telling them what I've just told you on September 24. They wrote back to me today, asked additional questions. We're going to answer those additional questions. So, I don't know what else can be done.
Can I respond?
And I think that this should not be a debate. He should not respond. That should be the end of it, because we are not going to debate this here at a council meeting.
Mr. Deemer, have you ever been wrong?
I try not to be, Mr. Miller.
And have you ever lost a case?
That's why I take my time to research things before I give opinions, and that's why I refer to notes.
Have you ever lost a case?
I don't sign affidavits.
Have you ever lost a case?
That's not pertinent here, Mr. Miller.
Certainly, it is.
Have you ever won a case?
Could you, you could be wrong. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I have a few.
Good. Well, let's talk about that.
Well, no, we want to talk about that. We got a guy here who has a complaint.
Who you've taken sides with, and I think that's inappropriate for this council.
And you're causing harm to a citizen and of our town.
You know what? Can we please move on? What we're talking and what's happening here is just getting a little bit too strong. And since this case is still, actually, all of this started with a complaint from a resident and the city responding to a complaint.
What was the complaint, Mr. Mayor?
Was it a complaint about the barn?
Yes.
Or was it about tarps?
Mr. Platt?
Both.
What does the minute state in the BZA that just says tarp? That they complained, they only complained in the BZA minutes that the barn, they didn't have a problem with the barn. They had a problem with the property outside that was tarted. That's what the BZA minutes said. That's what I seen.
The neighbors that were at the BZA meeting stated that they were not the ones that made the formal complaint.
It doesn't state that in the BZA minutes?
That's what they said at the meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, it doesn't say that.
Are the minutes inaccurate?
No, they're not. I'm going to say that there was an anonymous complaint from a neighbor, and at the meeting, they stated, the neighbors that were there stated, they were not the ones that complained.
Was the complaint having to do with freestanding structures, though, or what was the complaint?
I am going to object to this, Mayor. He cannot be cross-examining our officials at this meeting. This is not appropriate.
It seems like we just shouldn't be in a courtroom.
That's right.
If we want to discuss this, if there's a pending legislate, or litigation, or there is a suit filed, shouldn't it be in an executive session?
There is no pending litigation. They have missed their time period for appeal after the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Then I make a motion that we have an executive session.
Okay, we'll do it at the end of the meeting. I'm okay with that.
There's no pending or imminent litigation unless he's telling you now he's threatening to sue, then we can talk about it.
I'm not, I'm not saying whether or not we're suing or not. We're trying to work this out without having to sue, obviously.
Well, this isn't the place to do it.
It's expensive for everybody, so we would like to avoid that. What I wanted to do was avoid the city tearing down the structure before there is any litigation.
Well, in the letter I got by email, usually after 5:00 at night, so it doesn't come to where I'm working, it comes to home, said that council voted 5 to 1 at one time to not tear down this guy's barn.
Exactly. There was express consent.
But the city has been unable to provide records.
Now, that's not true. That cannot be documented, Mr. Miller, so I don't know where you're getting that information. Obviously, you're taking it from?
Came from your email.
The property owner's side.
Came from your email.
No, not, it didn't come from my email.
Well, the fact that it's been standing for eight years.
Yeah. Why are we even pursuing this? That's a fair enough question.
It's a violation of the law. That's our jobs, Mr. Miller.
There's no law against having a freestanding structure.
That's your opinion.
This is America.
Mr. Mayor?
Land of laws.
I think, I think this is the time.
Then I made a motion for an executive session.
All right. We are going to move on with pending and new legislation, starting with resolu, you may have a seat, Santo. Pending our new legislation, starting with Resolution Number 81-2013.
I'd like to offer Resolution 81-2013 for its third reading by title only, please.
Second.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Janelle Melanchenko to the vacated position of accounts receivable in the Finance Department on a part-time basis.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 81-2013 so that it reads full-time in place of the part-time that is in there.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, She.
You're welcome.
All right.
I move that we pass and post, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, and what's your pleasure?
I move we pass and post Resolution 81-2013 as amended.
Second. Roll call.
Oh, Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Resolution Number 81-2013 passes. Janelle is going to be a wonderful employee. I congratulate her and welcome her to our family as a full-time employee. Resolution Number 93-2013.
I would like to offer Resolution Number 93-2013 for its second, third reading by title only.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
A resolution appointing Bob Hopkins to the Planning Commission in order to fill a recent vacancy.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post ordinance Number 93-2013 according to law.
Anya's second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Darrow?
Based on the conversation in our work session at this time, I personally don't know Mr. Bob Hopkins or so forth, but based on what I learned in our work session, I'm voting no.
Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution Number 94-2013.
Stay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer Resolution 94-2013 for a third reading by title only.
A resolution appointing Lou Townsend to the Macedonia Audit Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we pass and post Resolution 94-2013 by, according to law.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
I'd like to say yes last week, Mr. Townsend. I'll say yes this week.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
All right. Lou, it's official. And Lou has already taken part in audit procedures, so he's right on board already. Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing you to enter into a community cost share agreement with NEORSD for the purpose of accepting funds for the Golden Lake Mound Rehabilitation Project as mandated by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any other motions or legislative actions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have an executive session regarding legal matters and personnel.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, first of all, it has to be pending or imminent litigation, has to be the motion, if that's your motion, and matters relating to personnel, and then there needs to be a roll call. It can't be a voice vote.
Yes. So, is that the reason?
Yes.
Roll call.
So, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Me.
You want to have it at the end of the meeting, though, right, Mike?
Well, he's calling it now. So, he's, he's calling it now.
Oh, I thought you were calling it for after the public meeting.
We can have it after, if that you prefer.
Can we do, can we vote?
Sure.
Sure.
So, people don't have to wait.
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions? If not, correspondence to the clerk?
I have none, sir.
Moving right on into the mayor's report. When we met with Norfolk Southern under the Ledger Road Bridge back in August, among those persons was Mike Loffler, and Mike Loffler is the main man in charge of bridges for ODOT. He was there to support the city's decision to close the road until Norfolk Southern did something to protect vehicular traffic. His assessment of the condition of the bridge mostly fell on deaf ears as far as the railroad's representatives were concerned. Their number-one concern is the track. The track's in great shape. However, my staff and I felt his presentation left no doubt that some type of immediate fix was needed. After a much-heated discussion, the railroad agreed to temporary fix. The fencing was installed, but everybody there on our side felt this was barely sufficient. But how could we get anything any better? It was quite a mountain to overcome, because the railroad does not feel there's anything wrong with the bridge, and really, they don't take orders from anybody. That's the bad news. The good news is that I received an email from Mike Loffler on Tuesday, September 17, saying, "Don, I came across two clauses in our Ohio Revised Code that may aid your cause." Number 4955.23, crossings above the streets. It states, "No person or company owning or operating a railroad which crosses over and above a street at any elevation above such street sufficient to permit persons to pass along such street beneath the crossing shall place, cause to be placed, or permit to be or remain in the street beneath such crossing or bridge, any peer, or others stay or support unless it's authorized by the city by ordinance. That bridge shall remain in such condition that iron, coal, or other hard substance, fluid, or other matter can fall or drop through such crossings or bridge upon persons traveling or passing beneath it." And the second ordinance he sent me, or the second Ohio Revised Code, was 4955.24, which states, "A person owning a company, owning and operating a railroad that fails to comply with the requirements of or violates Section 4955.23," the one I just read, "for each day during the continuance of such failure or violation shall forfeit to such city $100 to be recovered in a civil action against the city's name." So, it was only a day later that our law director informed Norfolk Southern in a letter stating that we are not going to accept anything but a permanent repair to the bridge structurally. What is happening in the meantime? Channel 3 was out here today. We're starting to get notice. One of the things that we are very much concerned with is how the bridge is, not just because rocks are falling through, but we want to know how the bridge is structurally. In order to determine how the bridge is structurally, Norfolk Southern has to do tests. To this point, they are refusing to do these tests. If they don't do the tests, we will proceed forward, because the concern is derailment. And if you ever look at those tankers that are on that track, they're carrying either something that's a hazardous material, or the most common thing is ethanol. Can you imagine one of those trains, maybe almost a half-mile-long, loaded tank cars with ethanol derailing under the 271 bridge? It would be apocalyptic. I went to Bedford yesterday for the dedication of the Elmer Flick Memorial Statue in their historic park. Larry Moore, Tim Taylor, along with Mayor Dan Posack, did a great job in presenting the story of a lifelong resident, Elmer Flick, who was recruited, lived, and died in Bedford. He played professional baseball for 13 years and ended up being enshrined in the National Baseball Hall of Fame. He played for the Philadelphia Phillies, the Philadelphia Athletics, and the teams that later became known as the Cleveland Indians, but in the early 1900s, they were called the Blues, the Broncos, and the Naps. I think we got a better name now than then. In 1907, he was so liked and felt to be so talented that Cleveland refused to trade him for a young man named Ty Cobb, who was one of the greatest baseball players there ever was. We had Slider there, Mike Hargrove was there, Joe Charbonneau was there. So, I congratulate Mayor Posack in Bedford for this memorial occasion, and it was an honor to be invited. We have a great tool that keeps you in touch with your city. If you have an iPhone or Android, with your iPhone, go to your app store and search My Macedonia. With your Android, go to Google Play Store and enter My Macedonia with the capital M. With this app, contacting your city or getting information is only a touch away. We already have people reporting unsafe conditions and building violation to us by using this app, so it works. Also, another reminder to get our NEXO system to get the latest dispatch buttons by text. Simply text our zip 44056 to 888777. You should get confirmation in a minute or less. We are quickly approaching 180 records requests this year. That means we are working on records requests at least every other day. Some are so extensive, they actually take a couple of days to complete. The costs incurred far exceeds the costs collected. We not only have the costs incurred on-site by our employees, but off-site costs for special printing, legal endorsement, et cetera. Records requesting anonymously worry me because of existing legal actions being taken against the city. And although anonymity is protected by the law, it seems to indicate a lack of good intentions, and that's just my opinion. But as what we see happening here tonight, at least if somebody's name is on the records request, that makes it seem to me a little more legitimate. I would like to reinforce that any record request must go through my administrative assistant, Diana, and in her absence, Josephine. Diana is in charge of all records retention in the city. Now, what I would like to do is comply with all, let me finish, requests in a timely fashion to keep this situation from creating a drain on the service provided for every taxpayer dollar. I feel that we could better address all of our needs by creating a part-time office assistant, so that we can do these records requests without taking our regular staff off task. So, I'm going to bring forth legislation asking for that. And that way, we can do a better job, get them to you quicker and under control, because right now, we can hardly keep up, folks. All right. That ends my report, so we'll go right on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Oh, I didn't bring my paper in there. The, at the planning meeting, sorry. We had Gordon Foods. We had them in front of us on Monday, and hopefully, they will be coming here soon once they get everything taken care of, and then also a signage that we okayed. But I don't have my records on me right now. They're in my car. They're in my car. I knew I was forgetting to bring something in, but I will get back with you at next council. I'll have all the updates. And then Columbus Day, we're not having one on Columbus.
Right.
We're not having a planning meeting just because of Columbus Day, so we are going to have a special meeting, and I believe it's in October 15th. Did we make the October 15th?
Yes.
For planning for Gordon Foods at 5:30. Yes.
Special meeting because, yes, special planning meeting, because the meeting on the Columbus Day won't be held.
Right, and we need to get them, you know, taken care of. They have to come back to us, and I can tell you- you can go on, Mr. Mayor, and I'll pull that off.
The- what we were dealing with as far as Gordon Foods is to give them a conceptual okay that we think it'll work there. Gordon Foods really fills that lot, so it's quite challenging. But Gordon Foods would give us yet again another place to buy groceries, this one being on the east end of town. Most of our grocery shop is on the west end of town. Years ago, I wrote Gordon Foods asking them to come to Macedonia. It took a long, long time, but they finally are coming. The store had elevations that were not in compliance with the Western Reserve look, so we've asked them to redo the elevations. Elevations are the drawings of the buildings. We asked them to redo those so that they conform with the buildings around them, and they are going to do that. I will try and meet with them beforehand because they are on the fast track. They want to have this built this fall, and in order to do that, we're going to bend over backwards, but they still have to comply with being in the city center district, which means the architecture must be Western Reserve, period. But we will work with them by having special meetings, and we can't do any more than that. So that is planned to take place this fall, unless you have something else.
No, I looked it up. It is October 15th at 5:30. If anybody's interested in coming and learning more, that meeting will take place at that time unless something changes. Kayla and our building department will let us know, and then I'm sure somebody can put it on the website or something if anything changes on the calendar, okay? That sounds about right.
All right. As far as any other committee reports, I could ask Lou Townsend to give one, but I won't do that to you, Lou. I'll tell you that today, we had our exit audit. The exit audit is a meeting between council and the audit committee to go over our audit before it's made public. So the audit that was presented to us today was a draft, and it will be made public very soon. When it is, then all the information on there is available. Any other committee reports tonight?
Mr. Mayor, just want to mention that I had Judge Tom Tiaodosiu appear at a senior citizen lunch, which I sponsored in our community room this past week. And he gave a presentation actually on a new program that the court has instituted to turn around people's lives that have been negatively affected by substance and by alcohol. But I just wanted to tell council that there were several nice things said about council, particularly about the construction of the bridge over Highland Road, and particularly about the fact that the people who live in that particular area are noticing the effects of the bridge in terms of the quiet zone. And they were just very, very complimentary toward council due to the fact that we got these projects done during one of the most difficult economic periods in our country. And the people that I spoke to there were very, very grateful, not only for the administration, but also for council, getting these projects done and moving the city forward. So thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Any other committee reports?
I would like to thank the police department, because I went to the luncheon today with the seniors, and the police department were awesome, the detectives and everything. We did with the seniors today scams, and it was quite interesting because, you know, we had so many different things going on with scams, and it was very educational to myself and to the seniors today. So thank you to the detectives and the prosecutors, Summit County. It was a nice time today.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Department reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I want to thank council for getting that Northeast Ohio Sewer District legislation passed. We had to do a lot of negotiating, Mike and Nick, to get that through, and we'll be able to start that job. We had till November 1st to complete it. If it's not, the city could be fined, so this comes at a good time.
What were the funds that we're getting from?
That's community share.
Okay.
Excuse me. Also, I'd like to say, the rain barrel, when I announced at the last meeting, everyone asked, "Well, what are we going to do?" October 23rd, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at Macedonia City Hall, we're going to have a complete training, and you could buy the rain barrel system for $50. You have to purchase it by April- by October 15th. And at this class, you'll learn what it's about, how it can help you, and how you can get the savings through the district by having these rain barrels. We'll put them together for you. We'll help you, and load your car, and then you just take it home. But it's a good thing, I think, to one out in Garfield, and it's a good thing. There were a lot of people there, and you could save up to 25% on that district assessment. So it's a good thing to have.
Where do we go to purchase them, from the city here or some?
No, you- I have these flyers.
I put flyers all around.
Yeah, there's flyers all over.
Okay.
They're at the rec center, we'll be on cable, and in the messenger. So there's numbers on there to call, and you can get ahold of Sharon in my office, or they can call Babette, but the numbers are on these flyers.
Okay, so we can pick up the equipment and then bring it to the date on the 23rd?
No, they'll deliver it. You order it. It'll be at the workshop.
Okay, when we come to the workshop.
Right, and we'll help you put it together, and then just put it in your car, but it's a good little class. It makes you understand what you could do to save some money.
Jim, tell them where the workshop is.
The workshop, we'll meet here, we'll have the class session here, then we'll go across the street, and they'll have it in the old firehouse, because it's one level and easy for cars to pull up. And we'll put them together, and we'll have the tools for everybody.
Mr. Parker, there's a flyer in the mail.
And then we'll load their cars.
Thank you.
What if you can't make that meeting?
Pardon?
What if you can't make that meeting?
You would ask that. No. You could call. There's numbers on here you could call, like Babette. You could call her, and she'll help you. She'll make arrangements. And we're also getting from the Pike survey from Sandy, I can't remember her last name, but she'll help us also. The numbers are here, though, and you can even call, and they'll help you if you can't make this, okay?
Thank you.
They'll be able to take care of it.
Jim, tell them about the models you've built, the demonstrative barrels that you've put out.
They're out front right now.
They're out front right now, so as people walk in and out, pay attention, you'll see what a rain barrel looks like.
One of the questions put to me was, "What happens when it rains and the barrels full?" Well, on your gutter, there's a little system that they'll give you, and that's the diverter device. If the barrel fills up, the diverter device has a little flap on it. It flips, and it makes the water go down your gutter. It won't overflow, and can't overflow the barrel, or nothing like that can happen. That's why they have this diverter system on your gutter, okay?
Good job.
And another thing is, I'm outfitting one of the trucks with a liquid application system. It's nothing new. Every community around here has done it. ODOT is very big on it, and so I'm having one of my trucks outfitted with that. And we'll be able to buy the pretreatment material, be able to do the streets when we have warnings, or just watch the weather. If we see something is approaching, I'll send that truck out. They'll pretreat all our hills, our intersections, our curves, anything that we've always had problem with in the past, like Ledger Hill, Shepherd Hills, Broadmore Broadledge, 82 by Longwood. We'll make sure those areas are pretreated, and with this material, you know, it just minimizes ice bonding to the road. So we're going to get into that, because we save quite a bit of money on the salt. Salt is actually $9.63 a ton cheaper this year than the previous years. So we're going to try to utilize that money and do this new treatment, for us anyway, it's new. So that's where I'm at.
Very proactive. Good job. Mike?
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Commercial update, we have 25 new businesses this year, eight exterior remodeling and additions, seven under construction, 10 renovations. Residential, we have 31 home starts. That doesn't include the 13 lots that just sold in the past few weeks. Homes under construction are 55, additions are 12, alterations are 38. Zoning update, we have done 362 point of sales. 416 zoning letters were issued this year, and those are, a lot of those are complaint-driven, where we follow up and site property owners, 416. 99 noxious weed citations were issued. And the planning update that I had given Rita before is our October 14th meeting was canceled in observance of Columbus Day. However, the planning commission has tentatively rescheduled that meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, to accommodate possible applicants. If held, the submittal deadline for that meeting will be October the 4th. The next regular scheduled planning meeting will be on Monday, October 28th. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Angela?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an announcement, we're trying to get the word out. I know we have announced that our annual winter craft fair was going to be held at one of the local churches. Unfortunately, there was a scheduling error, and we no longer have that space available to us, so we have been seeking out other avenues that can accommodate the size of this event, and we are going to host it on November 16th at Lee Eaton. So that is where we will hold the craft show this year. So that is Saturday, November 16th, from 9 to 3. We are still currently accepting applications for vendors, so if you have something that you would like to sell and participate in, you know, please contact us at the rec center, and we can get information to you through email, or we can have you come pick it up. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we have a lot of updates happening at the rec center, physical updates. We have our new furniture for the lobby arriving tomorrow. I just got a call to schedule delivery today, so we're very excited about that. All of our game tables are being replaced next week. Those are arriving, and we also have all-new pool furniture that's arriving in the next few weeks as well. So you'll see a lot of nice updates, and invite everyone to stop out and see them for yourself. Thank you.
Very good. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Jim DiGlatano for being innovative and stretching out the equipment cost. As he mentioned, he wanted to buy that new tank and use that brine solution, and having gone with the- he went to a meeting with the mayor and researched that. And when he came to me and we looked at how much lane miles he could do and how more efficient it is, and by pretreating the roads quicker, I think he did a lot of research on it, and he's able to save some of the older trucks that would have probably been sold in the next year or so, and retrofitting them with this tanker. And I think it's going to be a new process, there'll be some bugs to work out, but I think, you know, it's been proven itself in other communities that it's just cost savings, especially even though salt price is coming down this year, you know, you never know what the market's going to bear. So it's kind of exciting to work with Jim and seeing him move that way. As far as the year-to-tax increase for Rita this year, the good news is we're up 12 and 1/4 percent from last year, which is $718,000. Last year at this time, we had $5,865, and in 2013, now we're at $6,584,000. So that's the good news, we're up 12 and 1/4 percent. We did finalize our special assessments filed with the county, and what that is, is the water maintenance fees. The fee that everyone pays is $20.80, and the mowing, the people that didn't mow, and we had to go and mow their properties, those get on their tax bills, and they're assessed on to your next year's tax bills. And of course, council passed the alarm drops, which was hard to collect from some of the businesses in town. We would send them invoices, you know, time and time again, and some of them were outstanding as far as even two years with no collections. So we're able to put them on their property taxes, and so they'll have to be dealt with. And previous, we had a $2 late fee on the $20.80 water bill. If you were late or didn't send it in, you know, we just charged $2, and council had moved that up in previous years to $10. Well, that $10 fee, which does go on their tax rolls, it amounted to $8,000 in late fees last year. So if you don't pay your $20.80 water bill instead of $2, you're going to pay $10. And that amounted to, like I said, an additional $8,000 that goes into the revenue and does water maintenance projects for stormwater. So I think that from a standpoint of the work that the administration does in trying to account for these fees, if you're going to be late, you should have to pay a little bit of a penalty to, you know, for the extra work. I don't know if, in the past meeting, I wasn't here, but we've been talking about the healthcare task force, and we met with them. And the bad news is that our run with BORMA, who is our medical mutual provider, is expiring, and they're talking about rates as high as 25 to 28 percent increases next year, which would equate to almost $300,000. Luckily, we're on the position where we can leave the BORMA pool, and we've been researching it in Summit County and some other entities we were getting quotes from. And one of the entities that we could maybe join another pool with actually has medical mutuals, so it'd be a seamless transition, and it would look like a smaller increase, and we're talking about 1 to 2 percent increase with the benefits being the same. So Betsy's been on top of that. We've met many times with the mayor and Betsy and the insurance people. So worst-case scenario was with staying with BORMA, we would really be penalized, and it's not our claims that have been driving this pool increase. Our claims in relation to everyone else in the pool are actually 75 percent of adjusted claims, so we're actually helping the pool. And we would be responsible for the runout claims, but because hopefully, we're going to stay with medical mutual, it'll be a seamless transition. So that's the good news. On top of Obamacare and all the other costs that roll into this, it could have been a very significant amount of money that the city would face, so we're hoping everything will transition easier. And lastly, I want to congratulate Louis Townsend for being on the audit committee, and today, he was actually in there. We met with the auditors, and Ms. Darrow came, a councilwoman, and was explaining what the issues were, and which was, in my view, pretty insignificant. There's no findings or recovery as far as monetary money, and the cash statement stayed the same. There were some adjustments on the technical end of the GAAP statements, but mostly focusing on the bridge. Our Highland Road Bridge was put in as a capital asset, and it had been started seven years ago, and I put it on all this year, and it should have been put on basically at its inception as construction in progress. So some minor details. And again, I want to thank council for moving, filling a vacant position that the person that's joining our full-time team, she's got a bachelor's degree in planning, and she's also working with Mike Ladd in the planning department. She'll be doing the commission meetings on the Mondays that they meet, so she'll be the new commission clerk, and she's being trained for that now. But she brings- she's been with us over a year, and she's also kind of a fill-in for the rec center as a lifeguard. In fact, today, she opened up the pool at 5:00 a.m., so she's kind of a do-all, and she's been writing grants for us, so I think she's an excellent fit, and I want to thank council again for confirming her.
Very good. This audit that we had, everything monetarily was good, and it's a procedural audit, so most of the stuff we talk about is the way that we enter things, the way that we interact with the GAAP system, which we have to send figures out, and they have to be sent back to us. And there were some errors there by another, that company. So actually, we had, I think it's going to be a good audit. Yes. This evening, we have Paul Solinsky, our lieutenant, with us instead of Tim. This evening, we have Paul Solinsky, our lieutenant, with us instead of Tim. Paul, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, I just have a couple announcements on behalf of Chief Black, he just wants everybody to know that hydrant flushing and maintenance for the city has been completed, and as of Monday, September 30th at midnight, we will no longer be running Boston Heights EMS, and that's final. And also, this month is a busy month that's coming up for us in October, National Fire Prevention Month, and it is, starts Sunday, October 6th, and goes through Saturday, October 12th. And Chief Black is, those of you that get the Macedonia Messenger, he wrote a really nice article in there, that actually gives you a lot of history about Fire Prevention Week, and kinda even goes a little bit further, and explains what the exit drill in the home is, the Edith Drill, and a couple other things, so take advantage of that. And some big announcements for the Macedonia Firefighters Association is our annual Halloween Fall Party is Sunday, October 27th, Sunday, October 27th, and it's from 4 to 6. And then the last thing, and we'll bring that up again, is Pancake Breakfast is Sunday, November 10th, from 8 to 1, and adults are $6, and children are $4. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Good job, way to go. John?
Just a reminder, everybody, trick-or-treats, Thursday, October 31st, 6 to 8, just make note of that. DB's been extremely busy, they cleared up a $75,000 theft case and a multi-state fraud ring that we nabbed and we're clearing up with some federal authorities, so we've been very busy, shorthanded still, but we're getting there, that's all I have.
Very good. Nick, do you have something?
No report.
All right, maybe you might wanna give us a brief rundown where council was involved the other night, that meeting did take place between Ohio Edison, Dries, the builder, and the city.
Correct.
All right, and you sent me something that I forwarded on to council so they would be aware of what transpired there.
Correct, so building and engineering met with the developer last Friday.
Nick, could you come up to the mic, please?
Building and engineering met with the developer last Friday to discuss his plan to correct the drainage issues. The meeting didn't start off on the right foot, you know, the developer was basically at the same point we were in June, not accepting responsibility to correct the issue. Towards the end of the meeting, I think we made some headway with the developer, he's scheduling his engineer and surveyor to go out and finally provide the information that we've been asking for, in an effort to be able to analyze it and present an engineering plan to us, so we can review and approve it. And this has been ongoing since June, since he was cited for grading without a permit, so we're, you know, it's been turned over to Myra, the mayor's court, and we're hopeful that we'll be able to come to a resolution with the contractor.
Well, thank you for your persistence.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question? A couple weeks ago, when we were discussing the bridge over Ledger Road, you said that you had requested blueprints for the bridge?
Correct.
And you never reported to council whether those blueprints were provided?
So we did, we did request drawings from the railroad, so in an attempt that, you know, perhaps our structural engineers could perform a load rating calculation on the bridge, and, you know, railroad said it was good, we didn't agree, let's do the math and come to a conclusive opinion on that. They did send us one, one document that they were able to retrieve from their records, it was regarding the foundations, however, information necessary to perform this complex calculation, you need the entire structural detail, we need the superstructure, you know, the tracks going over, and they have not been able to provide that to date, they claim that they are not able to locate it.
Okay, thank you. I think the reason might be 108 years, I'm not sure, but in 108 years, it's pretty hard to find.
I don't know, the foundation, the foundation plans were in good shape.
Really? That's amazing.
Maybe they, they...
All right, Joe?
Sorry, brother.
All right, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we just heard our police chief tell us that he's shorthanded, and at the recent work session with council, he was asked why we don't have part-time policemen, and the answer I was given was our chief didn't want any, so I was gonna ask you to tell me why, so this burning question can be passed.
Because they're hard to come by, they're hard to keep proficient with all the technical things that police have to perform, a lot of the full-timers that we're hiring are part-timers elsewhere, it's not like the old days when we had quite a number of part-timers here in the department, a lot of the guys now were part-time here, you know, back in the old days, 10, 15 years ago. It's extremely difficult to find the good ones, we got lucky, our civil service passed the list and got it to us right off the bat, some good candidates on this list, and we're hoping to fill some of those full-time positions that are, that are still open.
But when policemen from Macedonia work part-time activities, like the high school football games or basketball games, do we pay them, or does the school pay them?
No, school pays for that.
Okay, and they can do it all, that has nothing to do with you, your scheduling?
But it's through the department.
Okay, so you, you manage their part-time activity?
To an extent, yes.
Okay.
In uniform, yes.
But that's not so hard, is it? I mean, they go to football games and basketball games and special events at the school, and I'm sure there's other things, why couldn't we bring in a few of them, so we'd have them when we have extra busy times at Christmas time, and weekends, shopping, and when they work at the movie theater, I see them at the movie, are those on-duty policemen at the movie, or are those off-duty?
They're off-duty.
Okay. How come they're using our cars?
Our officers are using our cars.
Okay, so if they're in a car, then they're working, if they're not in a car, then they're on their own. So if they walk inside, and the car's sitting outside, is that an on-duty policeman or an off-duty? I'm being asked, and I have no idea.
I'm missing your angle here, if we have an officer working Cinemark, for example, sometimes it's filled by our officers, sometimes it's filled by a Boston Heights officer.
Right, it's not always Macedonia.
Exactly.
Okay.
If our officer works it, he takes a cruiser down there, so you'll see a Macedonia police cruiser outside. Sometimes road officers stop in, whether it's an issue inside, whether it's a stop-in, see if he needs something.
So it's crowd control, and...
It's whatever they ask us to do for the most part, yes.
Okay, now I can answer the people that ask me.
Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? All right, at this time, we're gonna go into executive session, we don't have to vote on it again because it was already voted on, so thank you for coming to tonight's meeting, we'll only reassemble to adjourn. All right.
You!